Eh, que me cuentes.
¿Qué es eso? ¿Very good? You're you're kind of early.
Yeah. Yes, you know what they say, right now, if you're not early, you're late.
Yeah, yeah.
Eh, que me cuentes. Sí. Eh. Eh, no. Eh, no te mandan un un una cosa de inscriptación, tú lo haces con el software.
Bueno, que te hablamos más. La otra parte de la tercera es que lo que se utiliza es un portátil.
Exacto.
Para poder para poder utilizar ese y eso. ¿Lo tenemos o?
Sí, claro. El el archivo de inscriptación es algo eh auto generado, que tú entras ahí. Eh, hace hace tiempo, hace eh, no sé, siete, ocho meses desde que pasamos el training. ¿Me oyes? Si quieres, ya llámame en cinco minutos. Ya, llámame en cinco minutos. Da da. They got you in charge of uh.
I always come and check people out just to.
Making sure that you.
It's just it's not it's not requested, it's just a habit. Yeah. How you doing?
Good.
Yeah.
Good, good, good. How's uh how's stormwater holding up with these rains?
Pretty well. No have much complaints. Uh, but it's it's another that consistent rain that actually causes the flooding. When you get less than an inch a day, it will flood. When you get over the edge and you could pass the two inches, I can.
And you get it all in one shot.
Yeah, if you get two, two, three days that the the projections are more than two inches a day, by the third day you start seeing the flooding.
What's what's funny is in my line of work, eh, people say, oh no, things must be fine because, you know, nobody's calling to complain and then we're like, unless their phones are down too.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Cause in my world, it's yeah, I mean if.
No, but I already know. I have I have my app.
Madam Clerk is about to call the rule and I'm sure we'll have two other councilmembers show up in the next couple of minutes. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Good evening. Councilmember Collazo?
Present.
Councilmember Moreira? Councilmember Diegues is not present. Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember Ruano is not present. And Vice Mayor Fernandez?
Present.
Mayor Sid?
Present.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Director Santos.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for the pledge led by Councilman Collazo.
Thank you and I'm gonna ask everybody to bow their heads in prayer, please. Dear Heavenly Father, good evening. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this community as we're all here in your name, serving our people. Today, we embark on a mission to fix this budget and make sure that we have all the services in place and pray for wisdom and guidance and most importantly, pray for a dolphin win tonight. In your name we pray, amen.
Order business, any referrals, additions, deletions, any motions to adopt the order of business? Any motions to adopt the order of business?
I want to move the order of business, Mayor.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. We're on to public comments. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Madam Clerk, is there anybody online wishing to speak? I think you guys gotta mute that computer over there, if you would.
Thank you, I don't know how to do this. Good evening, yes, I only see two participants and if you want to participate in public comments, please do so now.
There's a mute button on the top left.
I can't.
Testing, testing, testing.
Testing, testing.
Madam Clerk, you have anybody online?
Yes, I see only one participant and welcome to the meeting. If you want to participate, as always, unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. And if not, we will continue with the meeting. Again, I only see one participant online.
Hey, it's Stephen Hersberg, one six seven four five, North West Eighty Fourth Court. Good evening, Council Mayor. I just wanted to chime in on the budget. I was looking at a few things, sorry, I can't come in today, but I'll be the next one. One thing for all you to consider is based off the proposed millage, keeping it flat, I mean, we're at the, I think, the fourth lowest millage in the county. And when you look at the three towns, cities ahead of us, they have very different tax bases with Doral, Aventura, and Sunny Isles that obviously have different ways of having high assessments based off their commercial buildings, the mall, condominiums, and high-value condominiums, so the rate now is doing the residents a service. I do believe that considerably lowering the rate would potentially harm the residents in the level service. We want to keep, not the minimum level service, but the best service we can make. This town already has exceptionally low rate. This council for years has been fighting for that low rate and has done a good job getting that low rate. I just don't know if the room is there with inflation, with increased costs for the town. I know residents have had it too, but unfortunately, our service is cost more as well. Is there at this point for further lowering the rate? So just something to keep in mind. I trust you guys, you all make the right decision. I just wanted to point that out and I'll be watching. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman-elect. Madam Clerk?
Yes, I don't see anyone else participating via Zoom. And as well, is anyone here in council chambers? You're more than welcome to approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Who do you, you have other people?
The only person that I had was one participant, so that is it.
Public comment is closed. We're on to the next item, which is item six A. Ordinance, ordinance and first reading.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a ordinance of the Town of Miami Lakes adopting the millage rate for the Town of Miami Lakes for the fiscal year commencing October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, pursuant to Florida Section two zero 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 six five Florida statutes, providing for directions to the tax collector, providing for notice, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Any motions on the table? Mayor, I need to read a budget statement into the record.
Okay.
The proposed millage rate for the Town of Miami Lakes fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five is two point zero seven three two. This rate is the same as the current year. The gross taxable value for operating purposes is four billion, eight hundred and ninety-one million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and six dollars. The proposed millage rate will generate nine million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars in ad valorem revenue, budgeted at ninety-five percent collection rate. The proposed millage rate of two point zero seven three two is seven point nine percent above the rollback rate of one point nine two zero eight.
Any motions on the table, Council?
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the military age two point zero seven three two.
I'll second it. Any discussion, Council, any discussion? There is discussion on my end. After speaking to the property appraiser, I made a commitment to him that I'd bring it up. And also, I've seen an uptick in homes for sale in our community. Just recently, when everybody got their trim notices, eight new homes went up for sale. It's about eighty-eight homes for sale at the moment, and it's becoming more and more difficult, not only for our longtime homeowners, but that second, third, fourth generation of Miami Lakers to stay here. So while I'm not gonna propose a full rollback, I'm on the minority on this type of issue, but I'd like to see a three percent reduction in the millage rate. So my motion is to make, to do a three percent reduction in the millage rate.
I'll second for discussion.
Councilwoman Garcia?
Three percent would be, how much exactly again? In revenue?
Two hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
I'm sorry?
Two hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Two hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Thank you.
We have Councilman Veronel, who's attending online as well. A discussion, Council?
I'd like to, just like to ask you, Mayor, and I know, you know, you've been very transparent, you know, you've pushed for these types of cuts in the past. About three hundred thousand dollars in the budget, where would you anticipate getting the three hundred thousand without the residents? Losing level service or us not funding infrastructure or us, where would we get the three hundred thousand?
A, I'd have a very frank conversation about our two-manager system. You gotta get rid of one in the budget if this were to happen. That would take us to about seventy percent of this cut. Secondly, I'd take away the non-procured threshold. I'd eliminate all the contracts that haven't been procured that are under the threshold of, in the manager's discretion, on the twenty-five thousand. Additionally, I'd push to make those changes within, immediately add those changes within interapartmental procurement, where that alone, you see about a five percent decrease in contracts across the board. So just making the first one is about seventy percent of that cut.
Well, I mean, just making that first one, we'd probably have to give a severance package to one of the individuals. The other individual is here on a non-contract basis, right? So if you're actually looking at this, then what you're entertaining is removing the individual that we do not have to fund a severance package for. And, I mean, I know we can't make decisions on personnel here, but it's very clear by a process of elimination what that decision would be, just by the feedback you've been given. So I understand where you're going with that two-manager system. The other side, it would take extensive amount of time to come back. I mean, I don't think that this is something that you're gonna see the three hundred thousand in revenue come back on this fiscal year. While I agree with you, it might be something in the future. It's not something that we'd be able to mitigate the two hundred and eighty, so I appreciate you proffering those. But right now, immediately from the budget, where would we get the two eighty-nine?
I'd immediately remove that, first off, that position from the budget. Start off with that. You can't, it's not firing, and secondly, I'd emit every single, every single threshold.
I don't know if we can, I mean, well...
And I would go fine-toothed.
Let me ask, attorney, and I'm gonna ask the attorney, and I appreciate you giving the clarification. By us removing a position in the budget, isn't that like removing an individual? And I don't, I don't, I don't wanna put you in a bad spot, but I'm saying, are we allowed to do that in this form of government?
You're teetering.
We're teetering, is what I heard. We're teetering. So I appreciate your interpretation, Mr. Attorney.
I don't wanna say, you know, these are the types of conversations that I would rather have one-on-one with you.
I understand, but the mayor, the mayor's making a proposal for us during the...
You, as a council, as per our charter, there are specific provisions there that discuss administration is with the manager and your job is policy. You do control the purse. So do you want to eliminate from certain line items? You certainly have the right to do that. When you're talking about particular provisions, that's where you are, you need to be careful.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So my preference for where to at least initially fund the two hundred and eighty-nine thousand would be from the amount that we're putting back into the sinking fund with the pledge to then fully fund the remaining amount into the sinking fund from the carryover later in the...
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I appreciate where you're coming from, and I would say in years past, that's something that we've done, and when we've been afforded the luxury of having huge surpluses. Unfortunately, this year, the carryforward is not that ambitious, and from what I've done in my research with staff, it's approximately seventy thousand dollars. So to remove the funding of the sinking fund, especially at the manager's recommendation at this point, simple math, right, net-wise, we're not gonna be funding it. And I think what we're doing is we're, again, undercutting future councils, and I appreciate what Councilman-elect Hersberg came on the dais, and I think he's the only one that's provided this public comment, was we have nipped and tucked this budget significantly to the point where now we're getting creative, right? But to the point where we're border, teetering, to use the word that our attorney is saying, on things that are legal or not proper. And furthermore, eroding the fabric of the budget that you may inherit, right? The viability of the budget that you may inherit, or Councilman Diegues may inherit, but more importantly, to the other people that are sitting here. So while I've been a big proponent in the past of voting for these measures, which force, right, us to really tighten our belts, the tightening of the belt has come at significant cost. Last year, it came at taking away five hundred thousand from the park, right? This year, it's taking away out of our piggy bank, out of our savings. So, well, I think it's an honorable gesture, right, to kind of say, look, we can continue to tighten, continue to tighten. I think it's at a point where we're critically tightening, where we're undercutting to a point where we're hurting. We're gonna hurt our residents and services, and we're teetering on areas where it might not even be proper. So I, you know, I appreciate it. I don't think I can support this motion at this time, but I'd be more than happy to listen to other people's comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further comments?
Mayor? The, both items that you had before you, the only two items that you had before you tonight, which is, number one is the adoption of the millage rate in first reading, and secondly, the adoption of the budget in first reading. We have a presentation that I think is applicable to both items. Obviously, both items are linked, they're tied at the hip. So I think that it may be beneficial if you'll allow me to make the presentation. If not, I could hold it for just the second item during the budget conversation.
Yeah, right now, we're simply on the millage, and then we'll take one step at a time.
Yeah, it's, if I may, Mr. Mayor, it's important that you guys pass the millage first before you really have any in-depth conversations on the budget.
Oh, I know. Any further discussion on this? Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
I have, I'm sorry, no, no, I have a question. With regards to the, with regards to the staffing and the proposal from the mayor, I do believe that it is at our discretion to fund any line item. So I understand that it, that the attorney said that we're teetering, but I believe that this is something that has been done in the past, and if there's just no funding for a line item, I don't think that that's us teetering with regards to getting involved in staffing, it's just budgeting.
Madam Councilwoman, that's exactly what I said after that. Maybe, I'm not sure if you missed that part, but I did.
Maybe I didn't catch that part.
Yeah, I did put that into the record. That, yes, you absolutely, what you said is a hundred percent correct. It's when you discuss particular positions or you get into the actual weeds of personnel, that that's where you have to be careful. But as far as line items, you have complete discretion to go line item by line item and make the changes that you feel are appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
So the motion is from Mayor Sid, which was seconded by Councilmember Garcia, motion for a three percent reduction in the millage rate. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Moreira?
No.
Councilmember Diegues?
No.
Councilmember Collazo?
No.
Councilmember Ruano?
No.
Vice Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Sid?
Yes.
The motion fails.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Ordinance and first reading, item six A. Motion to adopt the current millage rate. Councilmember Collazo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruano?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
No.
Councilmember Diegues?
Yes.
Councilmember Moreira?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fernandez?
No.
Mayor Sid?
No.
The ordinance and first reading passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to the next item, which is item six B. It's an ordinance of first reading. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the Town of Miami Lakes, Florida, approving and adopting the budget for the Town of Miami Lakes for fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five, providing for expenditure of funds, providing for amendments, providing for carryover of funds, providing for the incorporation of the adopted capital budget as a capital improvement element of the comprehensive plan, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Any motions on the table, so we can start the presentation?
I'll move the budget as presented with the recommendations from town staff.
I'll second it. Any presentations from staff?
Yes. If we can get the presentation up, next page. Okay. This presentation is also before you. It's hard to read sometimes on the screen, but anybody watching on Zoom then can watch it on the screen. What we have done is, following the budget workshop a week or so ago, a couple of weeks ago, we made the changes that we thought there was consensus on the dais. Obviously, there cannot be votes, so we had to, we believe that there was some sort of consensus on a couple of different things. So the first thing, under the revenue side, we did, and you took the first step in making this so at the last council meeting, by adopting the first reading of the ordinance to make this happen, which is adjusting the ordinance that requires, the requirement for unallocated fund balance, moving it from two months of the general fund budget, which is sixteen point six seven percent, moving it back to fifteen percent, which is where it was about two to three years ago. The second item that we are proposing is to transfer two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of general fund dollars that are currently sitting in the capital account for the senior center interior buildout, transferring that back into the general fund to be allocated in this budget. With that, with those changes, under the expenditure side, from the items that we were originally proposing to cut from this budget, we are able to reinstate funding, or recommend reinstate funding, for all of the police overtime, which is the traffic enforcement detail, the auto theft detail, and the holiday Grinch busters detail. Obviously, the amount of overtime necessary for minimum staffing was already in this proposed budget, and now we've added back these items. We've also reinstated the funding for the new level of, or the newly calculated amount for the sinking fund, and that amount is three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Next page. So what we did is, I'll walk you through this next page, so you could see exactly what are the, how the numbers work out. So if you look across the top, the fund balance requirement last year, with the last year's budget of twenty million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, at sixteen point six seven percent, equal three million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and four. Well, the level that we presented to you at the workshop at sixteen point six seven percent would have required the unallocated fund balance to be raised to three point five, five eight million dollars. With the change of moving it back to fifteen percent, that drops the unallocated fund balance requirement to three point two five zero. In the workshop budget, we had an amount on the expense side of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars, which was going to be required to take from the expenditures and leave it in unallocated fund balance to meet the requirement in the middle column up top of three point five million dollars. Now that we're moving it down, we not only not have to move the hundred and sixty-two thousand on the expense side, Now that we're moving it down, we not only not have to move the hundred and sixty-two thousand on the expense side, but we now have some capacity of a hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, moving the number down to fifteen thousand dollars. However, from that one forty-four, we have to take away legal reserves, which is the amount of money that's sitting today in this current budget in legal reserves that we're pushing into next year, and that ninety-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars will be used to go towards the year-two payment towards the PIS settlement. Taking that amount away, that leaves us forty-eight thousand, thirty-five dollars to be allocated within this budget. So if you look at the bottom, and you look at the burglary detail adding that back, the auto theft detail adding that back, the holiday Grinch busters detail, the sinking fund, and then taking away the amount of money that we now do not have to fund in unallocated fund balance of a hundred and sixty-two, there is some reduced tree trimming, because we were able to fund thirty-six thousand dollars' worth of tree trimming from the FPNL franchise fee. On the revenue side, we now have the forty-eight thousand that I told you that is able to be transferred in from fund balance, the transfer in from the senior center. And then there were some revenue lines that we took a second look at. We looked at forecasted trends. We also had some new estimates, and we were able to make adjustments in about four to five revenue lines that equaled total twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that, Councilmembers, is leading to this balanced budget. Next page. So I just want to recap for you how we got to this point, and some of this you saw already from the, from the workshop. So these are the items on this next page that were cut in last year's budget, or this year, this current year's budget, fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And obviously, then, they're not being funded or recommended to be funded in next year's budget. They were the sinking fund, this is from the workshop. So we did not make any changes, other than to highlight a couple of things that we were able to add back in. The infrastructure sinking fund, obviously, it's in yellow, because we were able to add that back in. Fewer mow cycles, we're cutting five of thirty-five mow cycles in the parks, eliminated the mulch applications, eliminated the top dressing and so forth, as you read down that list. We reduced right-of-way maintenance by mow cycles, mulch applications, less fertilization. These are all things that you saw at the workshop. We reduced tree trimming, and partially, we're able to fund back with FPNL franchise. And then we reduced travel in per diem for the mayor and council. What we were able to do, that was already happened, that already happened last year, and we just kept those cuts for this year. In addition, to fund the budget at the two point oh three seven, that the millage that was adopted in first reading today, you saw these items also, that we reduced travel in per diem for town and staff, eliminated miscellaneous expenses, operating supplies, reduced training and education. You see the police overtime, because you saw that during the workshop, but it's in yellow, because we were able to add that back in. Eliminated the holiday decorations, eliminated the enhanced F dot maintenance, off-ramp at eight twenty-six and the one five four. Further reduced tree trimming, reduced additional emergency janitorial services, and you see down this list. That is essentially our presentation. The next page is there, just if any millage reductions were, would have been considered. We once again put this list for you for food for thought on the next page. But since the millage rate is, right now, in first reading at least, being left flat, these items are not necessarily, need to be considered. So what we, the only thing that is outstanding, and we were not able to do it, because this budget had been published for several days now, was the conversation that was had at the council meeting two days ago, which was to fund the LPRs. So we would have to entertain an amendment to move and fund that from the general fund. And if, if, if you want the staff to bring it back on second reading, and with recommendations on where those areas need to be cut on the expense side, we can do that. If you prefer to give us direction tonight and tell us to take the thirty-two thousand, five hundred, Melissa, that's the correct amount, LPRs? Thirty-two thousand, five hundred. If you want to give us direction on where to make those cuts to be able to fund that from the general fund, we'll be more than happy to hear that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the manager, and it's a clarification on two items.
Yes, yes. No, no, the floor's open, the floor's yours.
Mr. Manager, thank you for the budget presentation. I just wanted to go back into, can you give me the exact dollar amount? On the revenue side, it's first slide of the, that, and I know we're talking about adjusting the allocation from the ordinance from being sixteen point six seven to fifteen, what's that exact dollar amount?
Say that again?
Melissa nodded, yes, she understood my question. Oh, you didn't hear me. The ordinance where we're adjusting the unallocated fund balance from sixteen point six seven to fifteen, how much is that?
It's just a little bit over three hundred thousand dollars.
Over three hundred thousand, okay.
Right.
And.
And if you look at this sheet here, the busy sheet, that's got a lot of, you can see that, by the one sixty-two, six eleven, that is the amount that we, in the workshop, we were proposing that had to be put in from our expenses and left in unallocated fund balance to be able to meet the sixteen point six seven percent requirement. Now that we've lowered that, that one hundred and sixty-two thousand does not have to be expended. In addition, then, that leaves an additional capacity in fund balance of a hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five. That's, if you add those two numbers together, that gives you the just over three hundred thousand dollars. But you don't have that total amount, because of the legal reserves that have to be pushed into next fiscal year to help offset the payment for the PIS settlement. Got it. So what is the real number? One forty-four minus ninety-three?
If you see on the sheet, the one forty-four.
Oh, forty-eight, forty-eight, oh, thirty-five.
Oh, that we're, you're utilizing in this budget is forty-eight?
Yeah. Got it. Forty-eight, oh, thirty-five.
And again, just tracking and trending, this is probably going to be one of the years where we're coming, at least in my years, the closest that we've ever been to the actual number. What are you projecting a surplus? Are you projecting a loss? And what is that projected number? I know you don't have an exact number, but what are we projecting for carry forward?
Yeah, obviously, the fiscal year hasn't ended. We have a few more weeks, and the numbers haven't been updated to the minute, right? But the last, the number that we have, the last update, was about forecasting about seventy-four thousand dollars. Revenue over expenses for, to finish out the fiscal year.
I just wanted to make sure that I was still working with that number in my brain. It was around the seventy, I remember seventy-something, but seventy-four thousand. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'll yield my time on the floor for any other discussion you guys have.
Thank you. I have a quick question. Mr. Manager, where in the budget, for example, and I don't know if the council knows, you, a lot of them might not remember this, but you have a threshold of twenty-five thousand dollars, right, to give out professional contracts. Where, where in the budget can, can we see these? Do you have an amount of, like, is there a specific line item that says these are, the manager has two hundred thousand dollars a year to expend on professional contracts under twenty-five thousand dollars? Is that, is that, is there, how do we, how do we see that in the, in the budget?
Yeah, there, I don't believe that there are any left. We've been, over the last few years, trying to get rid of those types of individual account, or agreements, contracts, ICAs. We have one that's right now ongoing, which is a small one, for like three or four thousand dollars, for Natalie Garcia, who left our employment to assist Rosa in the transition into the procurement position. So she has, it's a small one, and she charges us by the hour when Rosa has questions about different things, and where is this, where is that, and how did you do this? And she's also assisting Rosa and Tony in doing the first blush of the procurement ordinance rewrite. I believe that that may be the only one that's active now. I offered one to Renee before she left last week. She deferred, and she asked not to do that, so we were going to do the same thing. You know, that's, it's one of the things, when we, we try as much as possible to promote from within. We think that there's a lot of benefit to that. People who have shown loyalty to our town, loyalty to this council, we believe that there's value in promoting from within. The downside to that is that, as we promote up the line, then dominoes keep falling behind that, right? So when somebody leaves, like a Natalie, who was a one-person show in procurement, or somebody leaves, like Renee, who was a one-person show in grants, there's value in keeping them on for a few months, just with small ICAs, to be able to give counsel and advice and answer questions of the person who's transitioning into those positions. I believe that there's, that's, those are the only ICAs that we have now on the books. Melissa, do you?
No, and then, I didn't question the value of them, I was just questioning where, is there a line item in the budget that shows where, not only ICAs, but if there's any other contracts that you, for certain services that you would give under twenty-five thousand, like, where in the, where in the, in the budget does it show?
They would be, they would be department by department, if I'm not mistaken.
It would be under a professional services account.
But, but in every departmental budget, there may be multiple areas in the budget where they're found.
So.
So give me, give me, I just want to see, give me an example, where, where do I look on, I'm just curious about that. So professional services account under every department?
If you look in, under administration, there's a professional services account for administration. If you do not recall, in this, I'm not sure if it was this fiscal year, it was in the prior fiscal year, we had a grants support service, and that was a professional service, and it's in that account under administration.
That's for the grants?
Yeah.
The grant support person, right?
Got it, understood. I thought, I thought maybe, I thought maybe it was under each, each department had, if they need a professional service. What's that, what's that number right now, under administration?
Like, Stormwater has a professional services account, Administration has a professional service account, which is under general fund. In other funds, they have their own, because their funding is only for that particular fund. But it's under zero, zero, one, thirteen, zero, one. I'll give you. Five, three, one, zero, zero, zero.
What's, what's the amount?
What's the budgeted amount for next year, or what's the budget amount in the current year?
No, for next year.
For next year, give me one second.
The budget that you are presenting that we're discussing now?
The proposed. So the budget for next year is fifteen thousand.
Got it, okay. And this past year, it was?
This past year, we had it at twenty, and we had a, yeah, it's hidden, give me one second.
So is that enough to pay Natalie, what you're all saying, to pay Natalie's contract, the fifteen thousand for this year? If she's as close to three to four, or do you, at some point, do you all move it within departmental transfers? What's the threshold for the manager's departmental transfer?
Seven hundred.
A month.
A month.
Got it. So how?
Which I may add is probably the lowest within the, within the county.
We're funding Natalie's contract within the existing budget, so we don't have to transfer money.
So if Renee were to accept, where would you have all found this money?
Also from the same source.
Okay, sounds good. Interesting. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this time I don't have a discussion, but I will note, we started the meeting right at six-thirty, which I applaud, but I think it didn't really give much of a chance for members of the public to show up and give public comments. I noted that the members of the audience arrived after public comment was closed. I'd like to just briefly reopen public comments to allow them to speak if they have anything that they'd like to say.
That's fine.
A second.
All those favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Esther knows you can come up whenever and speak, where it's, we're never going to tell you no. Nancy, Mama Nancy, you going to speak as well?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for opening the public comments. Obviously, you know there's one light item I'm really upset about. I cannot believe that you're going to take the two hundred and fifty from the capital fund, which was designated for the senior centers, to put into general fund. I promise, I can sit with any single one of you, and I can find that two hundred and fifty thousand. The other thing I think you need to start recognizing, and I understand, I'm a budget person, I've sat in that chair many a times, you need to start looking at salaries. When I hear that our employees, the ones who do the work, don't get COLA, but you are administrative-heavy, and look at some of those salaries, something's got to be done. You know, it can't be six figures here, two hundred thousand dollars here, close to three hundred thou, you know? Look at them. They're here, they're here, every time I come, they're here. It's got to stop. And if you don't want to do the homework, I'll volunteer to do the homework. On the senior center, I spoke to Michael Salem. I have ring grants. Michael Salem, you know, writes grants. The area agent has a lot of funding for the senior center. Louis, you know that. I'm sure, Ray, you know that. You know, what's going on? When are you going to give the seniors a home? Why are you so resistant in doing that? They're the ones that vote for you. Well, did you look at who voted last election? And maybe I'm a sole voice, I went to the bingo today, and I spoke with several people. I'm taking it real personal, because I think, while we have a generational gap, I mean, Peterman, you're my age too, so, you know, we're in the same gap.
Almost.
But you're close, you're a senior, you're a senior. I mean, it's not like you're not a senior. Who's going to care? Because obviously, some, some don't, and that's probably my biggest comment. Salaries, I agree with the mayor, a hundred and twenty percent. Something's got to be done. But them, who do the work, you start, start taking care of people, because morale in this town hall is terrible. We lost two good people, and you ever wonder why? Procurement officer, I was a procurement officer as a town manager. Seventy, over seventy percent of your services are contracted. What do you need a procurement officer for, full-time? I mean, fifty-one percent is the police department, you need a procurement officer for that too? Come on. Maybe some of the administrators need to start doing more work, but a procurement officer, when over seventy percent, I'm not lying, look at your document, it's over contracted, it's contracted. So what are we procuring? Officer, please? I get a little bit emotional when we talk about seniors. Thank you, thank you for reopening.
Thank you, Esther. Mama Nancy, do they know, do they know about the public safety coin? No, that's a secret. Okay, okay, I won't mention.
Listen, you all know that my memory is not so great. I think this is one of the first times I'm coming up here, and I got to tell you guys, years ago, and I want to say it's fourteen years ago, when I joined the elderly affairs committee, and I spoke to a particular gentleman, and I said, how come? That committee's got seven members, and this one, elderly affairs, has got twenty-one. You know what I was told? I know some of you may remember me telling this story. I was told it was because elderly people vote. Now I'm telling you all, that was the answer, elderly people vote. And I don't want to see the elderly senior center messed with. It's about time that the elderly have a place to be. Please, don't do away with that plan, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mama Nancy, appreciate your service to the town. Any other?
I'll just move to close it.
Okay, no, no.
Or you can close.
Public comment is closed. Any other motions on the table, or just discussion?
A brief discussion or a brief comment on this, and it's a little bit of, I guess, a confusion on what may or may not be getting done here, but with, with this transferring of the senior center funds of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what, what confuses me is. what, what confuses me is, are we essentially saying we're not getting a senior center for the foreseeable future? I mean, I think that that is contradictory to council member Collazo's item at the last meeting that clearly, and which, which passed on this dais. And I think clearly demonstrates that this, this council is dedicated, and or better yet, committed to providing a senior center, whether it be in the Grams property or somewhere else in an alternate location. Doesn't this send a mixed message? Don't, doesn't this contradict what the council very clearly are indicated at our last council meeting?
Mayor, can, can I chime in if you don't mind? And as you know, this town, this council, for twenty-five years now, has always valued our seniors, very much so, right? Currently, we have a slew of senior programming that we sponsor, that we host, in the Mary Collins Community Center. So for all intents and purposes, the Mary Collins Community Center acts as a de facto senior center. As you stated correctly, council member Collazo asked at the last council meeting for the staff to go out to have a backup plan, right, a Plan B, an alternative contingency plan in the event that the senior center that was promised to the town in the Grams property that was originally the Senior Village, that's now being called Lakeside Village, if that senior center shell is never provided to the town. So we have that. It's a mission for us to continue. We are going to identify whether it be an existing facility or some future facility and identify a facility that we can continue. We, it's not like we're abandoning the seniors. We are, can, continue somehow, some way, whether it be in an existing facility or a future facility, all of the programming that we host for our seniors. This is just, that currently, there's half a million dollars sitting in the capital fund for the senior center and with the original expectation that the Grams would give us the shell in that development. Now that that, the, the plans that are being discussed, that were on the table last meeting, that then they were deferred, the senior center may, on that property, may not happen. So, but in that capital account, there was half a million dollars. Two hundred and fifty of it came from impact fees that were restricted, that we cannot take and put into the general fund. The other two hundred and fifty thousand dollars were monies that this council transferred in there on a carry-forward amendment fiscal year or two ago to complete the, what we thought was going to be what the monies that was needed to finish the build-out of the interior. So all we are doing here is making a transfer of just the general fund dollars, because we cannot transfer the impact fee dollars into the general fund. But the general fund dollars that went in there, to bring them back out. And once we have a more complete plan on what's going to happen with the, with a senior center, whether it be at an existing facility, the Graham property, or somewhere else, then we'll continue to devise a plan for a dedicated senior center. And the seat for that, the starting point for that, will be the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have of impact fee dollars that are not being removed from the capital account. They stay in the capital account. I don't know if that's a short story long, sorry.
That, that answered the question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Manager.
Got it. If there's no motions, we'll just go to some comments and then.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the manager to please provide a comparison similar to what you did before when we were discussing increasing your salary, to provide just a comparison as far as the departmental director salaries compared to other cities of a similar size. I think that would be helpful in addressing Ms. Collins' concerns and the mayor's concerns.
Well, not only that, I got to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. Unions, sort of, you know, size, so just, yeah. Thank you, Esther. Look forward to seeing that.
Mr. Mayor, I had, I had some questions actually to, to my colleague to the right. I know both the, the senior center and the sinking fund are both things that you've championed during the years, right? And I also, ne- neither one of, of those, neither one of those budgetary items is something that's going to be expended right away, right? They're both items that are in holding in one form or another. So I wanted to hear your perspective as to what you thought your preference was as to whether we should leave it in the senior center, build out a capital fund, or if you would rather see those funds moved to the, to the sinking fund.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I think both, both line items are equally important. I think a lot of this, especially what I heard from, from two people that I consider leaders, right, and champions and advocates for seniors, and Mrs. Colin and Nancy. I, I know how, you know, this is a very important, I think you're the, the reason that, that I brought forward the item, right, Ms. Colin? Because we were scared, right? We were scared that the senior living village, this model for, for, for taking care of our elderly, we were losing it, right? And even Chairman Wick said, you know, when that was first passed, I finally have a place. You know, she felt safe that she could leave Celebration Point, and now we're on the verge of losing that, right? So I think the optics is, is really what Councilman Moreira was speaking to and kind of what the, the panic that's setting in in the senior community is, we're somehow abandoning this, this project, and, and that couldn't be further from the truth. But that's, that's the message we're sending by removing that money. So while it is a placeholder, I think it's sending a message, right? That this is somehow something that, that we don't want to do. And my concern with, with that is that the same thing happens that happened in Optimus Park. We took half a million, we got a rollback rate, but at what cost? Right? At half a million dollars that we took away from the Optimus Park that we haven't put back, nor can we put back, right? Because we just, there's not enough money there. So while I know we all like to champion the rollback rate and say, look, look at this great thing that we did, the counter to that was, we also took away half a million dollars from the Optimus Park. And there's really not a plan to put it back. So I think that's really my fear with the two hundred and fifty thousand, right? That we're, we're sending out a, a message and there's really not a plan to put it back. Now, realizing that it's not an immediate project, right, that it's not coming, there's going to be opportunities to put it back, right? Especially as revenues shift, especially when, when, you know, the, the ordinances go back to maybe fully being funded, because I, I don't like what we're doing here either, right? Taking out of our, God bless you, taking out of our piggy bank, right, to, to fund ongoing recurring expenses is not sound financial practices, right? And that's exactly what we're doing here. Some of us have even championed that this is bad fiscal, fiscal, you know, fiscal policy. And that's exactly what we're doing. We're reducing our piggy bank to go ahead and, and fund recurring expenses. And I think you're, you're going to be the one that's going to, you, or Councilman Deegas, are going to inherit this, right? And it's going to be very easy to deflect and blame administration and salaries, but the reality is that we're digging our own hole, right? And the residents come back to us, and the residents are going to come to blame us, right? We're going to deflect the blame because we're experts at deflection, but this is the moment where the rubber meets the road. So going back to the sinking fund, why is that equally important? Because we have grossly underfunded it year over year. We have taken some opportunities to chip away at it, and one day, we're going to need it, and we're not going to have it. So to, in a roundabout way, it, it sucks on both ends, right? Why I'm in agreement with leaving the sinking fund, maybe even reducing the amount of the sinking fund and looking at that carry-forward expenditure as maybe a possible stopgap is because there is a budget revenue surplus potentially, and because the type of money that it is. We're getting out of a reserve item to kind of fund a reserve, right? So I really see that more analogous, the adjustment to the fund and fully funding the reserve of the sinking fund as something that's analogous. While I believe that maybe, you know, if anything, there's money that we can put back into the senior center with that seventy-four thousand dollars.
I, I appreciate your input. The, the one thing I wanted to, to add to that, I think for everybody's consideration is the, the project formerly known as the Senior Village is, is still something that's still very much, you know, fluid at, at this point and isn't, isn't fully set. And I, I'm also concerned about the optics as, as it refers to the, the people championing and, and developing that project. And I don't want anybody to get the impression that we're in any way less committed or less able to fund the build-out of, of the senior center, that we're essentially defunding the build-out of the senior center. So I, I don't want to, to give that impression to, to anybody. That's kind of my preference to, to leave it, leave it whole and then make the, the sinking fund whole afterwards. But just wanted to put those thoughts up.
You know, I, I appreciate it, Vice Mayor, and I think we're, we're lockstep in that. And, you know, I think that, that's good fodder for the second reading, right? And, and a good opportunity to maybe revisit what those numbers are. But I appreciate the sentiment, and I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with you on that.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Mayor, just to the point that I made earlier, that we need an amendment on the LPR financing of thirty-two thousand five hundred. If you'd like for staff to come back in second reading, you can give me that direction, and we'll come back with recommendations on how to fund that thirty-two five hundred. If you had something that you want to give me direction and say, take it from here.
No, I'd like to move to direct the staff to come back with options.
Okay.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Have discussion, and I want to ask the police major a question since you're here now, if it's okay.
Major Gonzalez, Tom, Commander.
Have we finished the, the LPR net based on where your game plan was?
Uh, no. We have two intersections that need to be, they're still pending to be complete.
Are the residents that live near those intersections that can poss- some criminal can possibly go through those intersections and commit a crime and go back out undetected?
Sure.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any oppose? No?
No.
No. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
So in the motion from Councilmember Moreira, seconded by Councilmember Collazo, for town staff to look into options of funding the thirty-two thousand five hundred for the LPRs, Councilmember Moreira.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
No.
Councilmember Deegas.
Yes.
Councilmember Collazo.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fernandez.
No.
Mayor Sid.
No.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the rule on the main motion as amendment.
Ordinance in first reading, item six B, Councilmember Collazo.
Yes.
Councilmember Moreira.
Yes.
Councilmember Deegas.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
No.
Councilmember Ruano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fernandez.
No.
Mayor Sid.
No.
Ordinance in first reading, item six B passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That is it for our first reading. We'll see you at the second hearing of our budget. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.